...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the October 6 Minnehaha County Commission Meeting. I would remind you to silence your cellphones. There are meeting documents on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Bender in the white folder, and if you need listening devices, Robert is in the front row and he can help you with that. With that, we'll go on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second. Any additions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the county commission meetings, minute meetings from September 29, 2015. Is there a motion? Make a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion as second. Any corrections? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $242,256.96. Is there a motion?
Pay the bills.
Second. The motion is second. Any comments? Commissioner Barth?
Madam Chair, today's bills are pretty low and it's about, we bump along at this level very rarely, it seems like. But today's bills do include 129 individual bills for mental health issues.
Thank you, Jeff. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. There are none. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second. Are there any questions for Carrie? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item B is recognize significant employee anniversaries for October 2015. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie. Beaver from Human Resources. I have a short list for you today, but an impressive list. We have Linda Race, who's a records technician with the Register of deeds celebrating five years of service. And then we have three employees celebrating 15 years of service. Steve Van Wey, who's a juvenile correctional officer at the Juvenile Detention Center. Mike Mayer, who's a senior road maintenance team member at the highway. And Marty Roach, who's a road maintenance team member at the highway as well. And then we have Julie Meyer, who's with our sheriff's office, and she's celebrating 20 years of service. So quite a few employees today with many, many years of service behind them. So thanks and gratitude go to them.
And nobody here today?
Nobody here today.
Okay. Item C is recognize volunteers in the county departments for September.
Another long list. Every month I'm coming to you with lists well over 200, sometimes closer to 300, but we have a list of 240 employees and about, or volunteers rather, in about eight areas of county. So again, can't do it without them.
That's right. Very impressive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six is application for abatements. There are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. There are none. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. Item A is first reading and authorized auditor to publish notice of hearing on October 27, 2015 to consider a zoning text amendment number 15-01 to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County, amending section 12.13b agricultural tourism permitted uses in section and section 26.02 definition for the purposes of including breweries and distilleries in the definition of agricultural tourism. Item number nine is, sorry.
Thank you. David Heinholt, Planning Department. This is the first reading for text amendment. Text amendment was submitted by Lee Anderson and Janelle Johnson to consider allowing breweries to the proposed agricultural tourism ordinance section. The planning commission during the August 24 meeting directed staff to consider adding more than just breweries, i.e. distilleries, to that, which is where they add breweries and distilleries to that section as a permitted special use. And the guidelines are listed out in the attached ordinance. This also adds a recall and review section that would be similar to the conditional use permit section, which would allow the planning department the opportunity to go back and review operations that are already out there to determine if they're meeting their conditional use permit regulations, just like what we have already with conditional use permits. In addition to this, this also adds and clarifies some language in the winery section to help match what was, what's proposed in the breweries and distillery section. And then the last part would be to clean up some of the definitions, that there were some spelling errors and alphabetical and numerical order. Staff requested a public hearing date of October 27 be set. So action needs to be taken to publish notice to this meeting and set the hearing date for October 27 at 9:00 a.m. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions for David on this?
I just have one question. David, I'm curious, the change to go from one half acre up to one acre, why that, why that was done?
So there was a section in the existing winery's text that there was a half acre and then there was a one acre minimum. So by default, both of those, they kind of conflict with one another. So the minimum would be one acre planted crop, which most operations are already have that.
So what would happen to an operation right now that was working on, under a half acre?
Must be retroactive with.
A non-conforming use could continue as long as it wasn't materially altered, I think. So.
Okay. Any other questions for David? You don't need a motion, do you? Cindy? We don't need a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to authorize the auditor to publish notice of the hearing on October 27 on this issue.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, David. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien, and there are none.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are none. The next one is opportunity for public comment. This is a time when someone wants to speak about anything that is not on our agenda, and if you'd limit your time to about five minutes.
Madam Chair, I have invited someone that spoke at our homeless advisory board to just make a few comments at this time.
Good morning, Shereen.
Hi. I'm Shereen Ranch. I'm the executive director of Sioux Falls Housing Redevelopment Commission. And like Commissioner Barth said, I had talked about this topic at the homeless advisory board yesterday, and he asked that I come and make, make you aware of it. There's a lot of things that go on in government that, as you know, can, we don't always understand the impact that they have on, on things. So this is one of those areas. And every, every county, every metropolitan area in the United States has what they call fair market rents. And those are established by HUD. And they'll come out, they usually adjust them October 1 of every year. The fair market rents, which I've got, I went back five years to show you what the fair market rents are for the Sioux Falls Metropolitan Statistical Area, and that includes Minnehaha, Lincoln, Turner, and McCook counties. So it impacts, you know, all four counties. And basically, I've shown that the fair market rents have not, the highest they were, they've been was in October 1 of 2013. They were dropped in '14, and they're, they went up slightly for this year now going forward, but not even at the level they were in 2013. Now, what that means is that's, that has an impact on people getting affordable housing. And the reason that is, is for example, those who are on a housing assistance programs, that fair market rent is used to determine how much assistance they can get. It's kind of like a cap. So people on like a housing choice voucher program where they go out and rent from private people in the community, that has an impact on how much the place can rent for that they're getting. People right now have been having, that have a voucher are having trouble finding places within the rent limits, and that's, they're going to continue to have problems. We have, as you know, especially in Sioux Falls, rents have been climbing. There's, there's a, the vacancy rate as far as available units is like 4% right now. So the, the market is such that property owners can raise their rents and get them rented. So we have people that are losing their housing. The landlords are saying, you know, your year's up. I can raise the rent a whole lot higher, you know, so then they have to go look for something else. It also had, this, these rent limits, the other thing you have to know is that includes all utilities. So for example, for a two-bedroom, $736. That's not just the rent. That includes heat, electricity, water, sewer, and trash collection. So it's virtually, very difficult to find an apartment where you can get all your utilities and your rent for that amount of money. I put, just to kind of give you an idea, every, twice a year, South Dakota Multi-Housing Association does a rental survey to determine what the vacancy's at, and I've got that information at the bottom there, based on the surveys they've done of properties on the conventional market and the tax credits, because they have a little different rent limits. I've got what the rent ranges have been for each bedroom size and what the average rent. So you look like in the conventional, the two-bedroom, the average rent is like $755 when they did that in July. So it's, this obviously there, there isn't a statistically valid way of they do it, but it kind of gives you a pretty good idea what's, what's out there. The problem is the formula that's, that they're required to use, determine the fair market rents, that formula hasn't changed for years, probably the 1990s sometime. And that's all established by Congress. So the only way that can get changed is, you literally have to have an act of Congress to change that. They go by census data every 10 years, and then in between, they use the American Community Survey. They update that with what they call recent mover data, data, people who moved in the last 15 months. And then they look at properties that are no more than two years, that are more than two years old. And then they adjust for a consumer price index. They're looking at making some modification. They're, they're taking comments to October 8 about using a different inflation, using the consumer price index, but basically focusing on two components of that. And one is the rent of primary residents and fuel and utilities. If they did that, that would raise our fair market rents anywhere from $7 for a one-bedroom to $15 higher for a four-bedroom. So that would be a little, a little better. But I just wanted to point this out, because it also impacts programs that target people who are homeless, because those programs where they provide housing assistance also have this cap. People who are developing affordable housing, it has an impact. That includes those that are developing with tax credit and what they call home funds. And all of those use these fair market rents. They have to have a certain number of units that are within the fair market rents. And if they're too low, it makes it very difficult then for them to get the revenue to be able to pay operating expenses for affordable housing. So it does impact not only people who have assistance and looking for existing housing, but also in the development stage of it. And the other component of all this is it's because of the four-county area, they don't give any special weight to, to Minnehaha County, because with Sioux Falls, obviously rents are higher. They give equal rates. So the rents in Turner and McCook are lower, and that pulls down the average for the whole, the whole area. So the whole, the whole way they do it is causing issues for us. So I just brought this forward, just to make you aware that this could continue to impact our affordable housing in the, in the county.
Okay. Thanks, Shereen. Are there any questions? Commissioner Benega?
What's the backlog right now with your application process? I've heard that's significant.
Yeah. Well, the waiting list we have for people wanting a voucher is over 3,000 households. And there, it's a four-year waiting list now. We sent, we last contacted people on our waiting list in July of this year. We will not be contacting anymore now until, before January, because of, we've got all the funding committed for this calendar year.
Okay. Additional questions? Commissioner Kelly?
Shereen, the fair market rents, that's all the landlord can charge. He can't.
That's a cap. That's like a cap.
The tenant cannot participate, right?
Right. We can go on the, certain programs, that's all they can charge, and that's if all utilities are included. Some programs, like the housing choice voucher, we can go up to 110% of that fair market rent, but then that's all they can charge, is that amount. So if they want to charge more, we have had some landlords that are willing to lower their rents a little bit to meet that cap. Not as many as there once was. And some of them, they're just way above that, and there's, they're not going to adjust it.
So the fair market rents really are not at all realistic, is that?
Yeah, they're not. They're actually supposed to be, according to the regulations, they're supposed to be at the 40th percentile of standard quality housing. So 40% of the standard quality houses and our rental units in the area would be below those amounts, but I don't think it's, it's accurate.
Commissioner Benega?
Shereen, one more question. If you were to take Turner and McCook counties out of that, what do you think the percentage would be to increase those dollar amounts?
I don't know the percentage, but it definitely would go up. Either that, or they do some kind of a weighted way of looking at things. But they, the, the other thing is, in determining what's a metropolitan statistical area, that's actually determined by the Office of Management Budget for the federal government. And they basically look at where, they claim that 20, at least 25% of the workforce in a county is working in the main county, which is Minnehaha County. Then if 25% of Turner County's workforce is working in Minnehaha County, then that's why they include that county in the, the statistical area.
Interesting.
Okay. Any other comments? Commissioner Barth?
I would just comment that because of this, the way that they're compiling these numbers, that it appears that we're getting less federal assistance than, than we should. And I think that's something, whichever flavor we are about taxes and spending, why, why would we want to have a lesser share than we, than we ought to get? And the idea of averaging Minnehaha with McCook, you might as well do New York City and Zebah County.
Thanks, Jeff. Any other comments? All right. Thanks, Shereen.
Thank you.
That will go on to regular business. Was there any other comment? I think we had another public comment. I forgot.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm Brett Johnson. I work in our Human Services Department for Minnehaha County. And I'm also the board chair for the Sioux Empire Homeless Coalition. So just wanted to inform you that we're actually hosting Project Connect in our Health and Human Services Building today from 9:00 to 1:00. It's actually, this is the first year that it is being co-sponsored by the, the Homeless Coalition and the 211 Helpline. So we've got over 40 vendors or exhibitors there to provide whatever services or information about their services they can to individuals that are either homeless or are experiencing some level of poverty. So we try to make that a one-stop shop for individuals to at least access some information about services and hopefully get connected to the right services in the community.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, is there, is there any other public comment? All right. Then we'll move on to regular business. 9:00 a.m., we have an adjournment as a Minnehaha County Commission and convening as a joint meeting with the Dell Rapids City Council with the intent of reconvening as a Minnehaha County Commission alone for the rest of the regular agenda after the adjournment of the joint meeting. This was deferred from a joint meeting in August 25, 2015, yeah, August 25, 2015. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Then I would look for a motion to, from the Minnehaha County to go.
Just a vote.
Okay. I'm gonna call the meeting to order for the joint city council.
Nope. We have to, we have to adjourn.
To adjourn, right.
Yep.
I need a motion to adjourn.
We have one.
And I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Now, I'll call the meeting to order of the joint, Minnehaha County, City of Sioux Falls joint meeting. And I recognize that there is a quorum on the Minnehaha County side. I'd ask for a roll call on the Dell Rapids.
We have a quorum.
Do you need any more than that?
I need to list two of the here in the minutes.
I need to list the names. So if you do a roll call, please.
Attorney President Gary Martin, Tom Booth, Dave Somersell, Mary Fox, and Mark Crisp.
Recognize that there is a quorum on the Dell Rapids side. I'd ask for a motion on the county side to approve the agenda for today. So moved. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. A motion from the City of Dell Rapids for, to approve the agenda.
Thank you, sir.
I have a motion and a second. Did you get who? Did you have who they are?
I don't think there's a.
Okay. All right. I have a motion and a second on the Dell Rapids side to adjourn, to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number one is a public hearing of the Minnehaha County Commission and the Dell Rapids City Council to consider ordinance MC 28-01, amending the 2001 revised joint zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County and the City of Dell Rapids as following. A C Commercial District to RR1 Rural Resident Districts on the property legally described as Lot 1 of Overage Tract 2, Southwest 1 Quarter, Section 8 Township 10, excuse me, Township 104 North, Range 45 West. Minnehaha County is hereby rezoning, is hereby rezoning from C Commercial District to RR1 Rural Resident District, and the official zoning map referenced in the Article 2.03A is amended to include the property in the RR1 Rural Residence District deferred from August 25. David Heinholt.
Good morning. David Heinholt, Planning Department. As you mentioned this, as you're aware, the applicant Daniel Witty submitted this rezoning application to rezone a parcel of land located approximately a half mile west of Dell Rapids on Highway 115 from the C Commercial District to the Rural Residential 1 District, which allows for residential on minimum one-acre lots. Action on this item was deferred from the last meeting to this meeting to allow the applicant to meet with all the necessary parties and discuss the proposed rezoning with the City of Dell Rapids. Haven't heard anything, but the county planning commission voted unanimously, and the city planning commission as well, at the last planning commission meeting. A map and a copy of the minutes have been included for your review. I'll answer any questions if you have them, and can go through the pictures again, but I think we've seen those.
Okay. Does anybody want to review any of the information? All right. New developments since our last meeting?
No. I haven't heard anything.
Is there anything on your side? Go ahead.
Good morning. Jim Gillian. I'm an attorney here in town appearing on behalf of Daniel and Megan Witty. Since our last meeting, I've had opportunity to meet with the city administrator, the city attorney for Dell Rapids, and then appear also in front of the, the city council. And we have come to an annexation agreement for the property in question that the Witties and the city are both now comfortable with. And it's my understanding with, with that agreement, which they've been providing the original, that the city is now prepared to, to agree to the rezoning.
Okay.
If that's correct?
Okay. So we have an annexation agreement. So Cindy, would we want an approval on the commission side to approve the annexation agreement?
No.
We're not party to that.
Okay.
We're just approving the rezoning.
Okay. So any questions for Mr. Gillian? All right. Is there a motion on the county side?
Before we go forward, though, I would want to clarify one thing. I thought I heard you say in the legal description that it was Range 45, but I've got Range 49.
I may have misspoke. I have on here Range 49.
Okay. Thank you.
I may have said that wrong. Thank you for catching that. Comments on the commission side? Motion?
Do we act first, Madam Chair?
We act first.
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning. Is there any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. I need a motion and a second on the Dell Rapids side. I have a motion. Is there a second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. You don't need anything else, right? Can I have a motion on the county side to adjourn?
I'm sorry, if I may, just one, as a point of procedure, and I apologize for not knowing this, but does the county then need to reconvene and approve this amendment? Is there publication requirements before the new use can begin?
We don't need another vote. The vote in the joint session is sufficient. There are some time limit, time, there needs to be publication. I believe it's a 20-day period before the use can commence.
Okay.
That's our opinion from this side, anyway.
I figured there was some waiting period on the publication.
Yes.
But they're not going to be doing anything that quickly anyways.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. I think we're done. Is there?
Do they adjourn first, or?
Yep, we do.
You do.
Make a motion to adjourn out of a joint meeting and resume.
Reconvene.
Or convene, reconvene as a county commission.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. City of Dell Rapids, motion to adjourn. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. You are adjourned.
You guys can come back next week, anyway.
That's right. That's right. We are reconvened into a Minnehaha County Commission meeting and on to item number 10, which is a public hearing to consider amendment number 1501 to Minnehaha County 16-90, 1990, am I reading the right one here?
Yep.
Revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County to rezone from A1 Agricultural District to the Waterway Meadows Planned Development District, legal, property legal description as tract 1 of the pre-edition, south 1 half, northeast 1 quarter, section 7, Township 102 North, Range 49 West of the 5th PM. Minnehaha County, Scott Anderson.
Thank you.
Good morning, Scott.
Scott Anderson, county planning. Today is the public hearing and potentially a final adoption of a rezoning request 15-6 to rezone 10 acres from A1 Agriculture District to a planned development to be called Waterway Meadows. The property is located at 25723 Haystack Place, which is approximately three miles north of Sioux Falls, generally in this area. Kiwanis Avenue is about a half a mile to the west, and it's about a half mile north of Renner Road. So the planning commission had a hearing on this on August 24, and I have provided the minutes of that meeting for your review. The planning commission recommended denial of their request of a vote of four to one. I'll go through the slides for you. This would be a planned development which would allow one residential unit to be, one residential site to be built on this 10-acre parcel. That's the primary and the, really the sole use of this proposed plan development. You can see that there, there is, it is located in an area where there is some residential development, and I'll go through the slides for you, just to give you an idea. There is an existing structure on the property, and that's a horse barn that's located right off of Haystack Place. This is a picture of the, of the horse barn. The remainder of the 10 acres is primarily pasture for, for those horses. This is the property that's located directly to the east across the street. This is looking straight to the, to the north. You can see the, the horse barn and the corral to the side. You will, you will also notice that the rezoning sign is clearly visible there on, posted on the fence post on the corner. This is a property located to the southeast of the subject property. This is looking straight south, where that haystack lane sort of makes the curve. You can see the, where the photo where the arrow's pointed. Once again, this is the horse barn that's there. This is looking at, at the property towards the southwest. This is the backside of the horse barn, and that's basically the extent of the pictures. Once again, it's really just a horse barn on, on a 10-acre parcel with a, and it's fenced in, the entire 10 acres is fenced in. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have. Today's action, you can either uphold the planning commission's recommendation to deny the rezoning request, or you can overturn the planning commission's recommendation and approve the rezoning request. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions for Scott at this time? Otherwise, this is a public hearing, and we will hear from the proponents and opponents, and then go back to questioning. So do you have any questions at this time for Scott? Okay. Thanks, Scott. We'll hear from the proponents. We'll hear from the proponents.
Madam Chair and members of the commission, I'm Pam Holman. I'm here representing myself and my husband, Tim Holman. I provided each of you a simple handout prior to the meeting, laid it at your spots, and I'd like to make it very clear what the intent and goal my husband and I are in this process. If I might, in 2005, this barn was issued via a Minnehaha County building permit to be built on this 10-acre parcel. In 2012, my husband and I purchased the 10-acre parcel with the barn on it. At that time, prior to purchase, the title search did not uncover or reveal any issues. In 2015, when Tim and I were then informed via interested buyers that Minnehaha County indicated the barn was non-conforming and that if destroyed, it could not be rebuilt. When I heard that information, I contacted the Minnehaha County Planning and Zoning Office to confirm that statement. I was informed that because the barn did not have a house, it was non-conforming, and I was informed that possible solutions to that would be the typical process the county would believe, that just wait for the barn to burn down. That felt problematic to me, as we simply wanted a solution to say we believed we had bought a 10-acre parcel with a legitimate barn on it via a county-issued building permit in 2005. So then, in dialogue with the Planning and Zoning Office, who were very cordial, very cooperative, and brainstorming is what possible solutions might be, the one that surfaced was to seek a planned development district for a single house. We are not seeking what I think is a, you know, legal definition. I looked at legal counsel as far as eligibility. We aren't looking for anything that's transferable. We merely want the outcome of our barn to be a legitimate barn via the permit that it was first issued with, so that if something is destroyed, it could be rebuilt. So I wrote at the bottom of this document, our desired outcome was simply that the county ultimately would acknowledge that building permit and document that the barn is legitimate and can be rebuilt if destroyed. I understand clearly that given the multitudes of statutes you must follow, that the planned development district was one manner of which to legitimize that property with the barn on it for a single house. I stand by for questions.
Any questions for Pam? Commissioner Bender.
Pam, when you bought the property, I'm assuming that the assessed value of the barn was considered as part of the purchase price? So you paid, in addition, if you will, to the land price, you paid an additional amount for the assessed value of the barn?
Yes, we did. And we also carry insurance on that barn. Yes.
And I frankly don't understand why you can't replace something that you purchased if a fire or a windstorm or whatever that is an act of God, if you will. If you purchased something and you're paying taxes on it, and we've collected the taxes, it seems to me you should have the ability to replace that.
Are there any other questions for Pam at this point? Are there any opponents? Or, excuse me. I was just going to get opponents.
Your home is not contiguous to this at all.
No, there's a development, you can see right across the street, that it's contiguous to. However, our home, we recently relocated again in Minnehaha County on another 15 acres. Previously, Commissioner Kelly, Tim and I lived in the Packard Vintage Village Development, which is just to the south of where this land is, and we were on a five-acre property. We sold that and relocated in another area in Minnehaha County. And so this was always a freestanding barn with 10 acres for Tim's horses.
And the horses are here all the time?
Right now, they're there. Eventually, when we get the new place fenced, they will move with us.
And is your intent then to sell? You mentioned interested buyers.
Our hope was to sell that property, the 10 acres and the barn, yes. And it was at that point, people's interests apparently started to call down here to find out about eligibility. The property did not have an eligibility. We listed it without one, and thus we uncovered this issue of if the barn burnt down, which clearly no buyer is going to want that, including my concern. If Tim and I keep that and the windstorm comes through and the barn burns or something, we've been paying, we paid for the barn. We've been paying insurance. We pay you taxes, and yet we're being told the barn is non-conforming and if destroyed, cannot be rebuilt.
But, if I may, according to this, if the barn was torn down, if somebody bought the 10 acres and tore the barn down, they could build a home there, right?
No.
They could not?
No.
No building eligibility there.
So it's not a building eligibility?
No.
No.
Commissioner, but that's what, if we approved this rezoning, then there would be a building eligibility and they could build a house there. I don't know if that's what, Commissioner.
Yeah, that's what I, oh.
Kelly is asking.
Okay, let me get a straight. If you sold the property, the future owner can do whatever they want, but if they tear, they in fact have a building eligibility on that property and could tear the barn down and build a house?
No. No. She wants to add a building eligibility to that 10 acres. The barn could stay. If we put a building eligibility, then she can have the building, the barn and the building.
But in effect, it's a building eligibility. Okay, that's my concern. Thank you.
Is it building eligibility to make the barn legitimate so the barn can be rebuilt if it's destroyed?
Is there any questions at this point? See if there's any opponents. I have an opponent.
Mike Seifer, I'm on the Planning Commission. I had sent you a letter regarding this issued by email. The issue you're talking about rebuilding, quite frankly, stables are a conforming use if you apply for the conditional use permit. This is a private stable. If it has a conditional use permit, which had this come before the Planning Commission to build a stable, I'm sure it would have gotten approved as a stable. But my concerns are others of, like I say, this was a created problem by a building being built, and eligibility's in this part of the county, that's technically, the irony of this, you just kind of talking about people who can't put a house over their roof, and we're talking about $50,000 housing eligibility's. The diversity of what you deal with is just unbelievable at times. But horse barns are conforming use in the ag district, and that's what this is, and that's what it should remain. When you get county eligibility's, we have eligibility's, we have rules governing eligibility's. This is what in my realm, like referred to as generating a housing eligibility. And it also gets into the other thing that's called precedence. I know three of you have served on the Planning and Zoning Board, and one of the things, I know Gerald, when you were on there, precedence kept coming up. Well, here's a precedence for you. I have 30 acres, and I'm going to be tearing down my old barn and rebuilding it. I have a quarter-mile long driveway. I can build that barn down by the road, and then eventually I can sell 10 acres or 20 acres of my existing place off to my sons or whatever. And now I've got 10 acres with a non-conforming use. Well, if you approve this one, guess what? I get an eligibility too. Now, as a landowner in Minnehaha County, I have eligibility's which have value, and this just devalues that whole process. Because it's almost, you're almost changing the density zoning ordinance through precedence is what's happening. And because I don't know how the county would be able to defend itself if they approve this, if someone else does the same thing, well, you're going to have to approve it. Otherwise, it would be challenged. And I know that's always a concern before the planning and zoning, is what precedence does this set? In my years on the planning and zoning, it seems like precedence is nine tenths of the law. It's just the way it works. And that's why when we start kind of stretching the ordinances, we've got to be very careful because we're going to have to live with that in the future. And it's a thing, so that's why, as a planning commissioner, that's why I voted to reject this, and I think it should be rejected. And I would encourage the commission to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Seifer. Are there any questions for Mr. Seifer at this time? Commissioner Kelly?
Mike, are you saying that if the barn burned down, they could build it back?
If it has a conditional use permit, it's a private stable, which is what it should be.
Scott has a comment. Scott, can we finish this part and then, I guess you better answer Commissioner Kelly's question.
No, I agree. I think I need this clarified.
Commissioner Seifer is correct that you are allowed to have a stable as a conditional use permit. However, the definitions of our stable are very specific. It has to be for remuneration. So you're basically, you have, what the Holmans are operating out there is not a stable. It's a barn for their own personal use. A stable is defined as a place that you board, train horses in exchange for money. So you would be boarding someone else's horses in the stable. They're boarding their own horses. They're not charging anyone. So there's a difference. I'll be glad to read you the definition of a stable, but it's not a stable.
And there's no, Commissioner, or Mr. Seifer?
I would counter that with, you can have a conditional use permit for a stable. You don't necessarily have to board anybody's horses.
That's true.
I suppose technically that is correct.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Seifer?
Yeah, thank you.
Any other opponents? The proponents have an opportunity to rebuttal if you would like.
One of the statements made dealt with, this was a problem created by property owners. And I find that statement very problematic because I have knowledge of, copy of, the building permit granted by Minnehaha County in 2005 that legitimately allowed this building on that property. So I do not feel that this is something the property owners have to stand alone with. And I seek your consideration as how can we creatively and cooperatively solve this problem, that we would be able to move forward with a legitimate barn on that property as permitted via your permit process in 2005.
Okay. Commissioner Bender.
So Pam, what do you think of the option that Mr. Seifer presented, that if something that you're worried about happens, that the barn somehow requires to be, it's required to be rebuilt, that you could come in and get a, you or a future purchaser could come in and ask for a conditional use permit and rebuild that barn?
I would want the solution granted now, Commissioner Bender.
You don't have a problem right now, though.
I don't want it delayed for a future day. I don't want it delayed for someone else's problem to happen when we're being told now that the barn is non-conforming, yet it's following off of the county building permit. It would seem to me that the commissioners at this time could address the issue. And if it's granting a conditional use permit to say that's a conditional use so the barn can be there, I mean, ultimately, that's what we want. We want acknowledgement and documentation that the barn is legitimate.
Could Scott address that issue for us, please?
Well, certainly, the applicant has the potential of bringing in an application for a conditional use permit, but you cannot grant it right today at this moment because there is a notice of hearing that would have to be sent out to the adjacent property owners to let them know that this is a new use that's being proposed, that the applicant would be applying for a stable. And so we would need to do the notification, and that particular use would have to go before a hearing, before the Planning Commission. You can't jump over all those steps and just approve it today.
Commissioner Heberger?
Yeah.
So there's a lot of things that are confusing about this process to me, but I'm curious, first, when the building permit was issued back in 2005, was this a non-conforming use at that time?
No, it was not a non-conforming use at that time because the applicant, not, I'm sorry, the property owner in 2005, which was not the Holmans, they had a larger parcel of property, and they got a building permit to build that barn. And then subsequently, after they got the building permit to build the barn, they platted off that parcel of land and sold it.
So it's not non-conforming if it's on a larger tract of land?
It would not be. If it's on a larger tract of land that's used for ag, like a 40-acre parcel, then it would not be. And then the other thing that I, and I, Madam Chairman, if I could just interject or give you maybe some direction that you could consider. The applicant is requesting a planned development to allow for a residential site to be able to be built on there, but you have the possibility now at this hearing to amend those conditions. So you could make it the Waterway Meadows, which would just be for the stable, I mean, for a barn. I mean, that you could do because you have notified, we've gone through the hearing process or the notification, and we have published a hearing notice that there is going to be a hearing on the Waterway Meadows. You could make it so that the Waterway Meadows would just allow the barn to be the permitted use on that property.
The barn only?
The barn only.
And then it would give them, if the barn burned down, they could replace it?
That's correct. Is that, I mean, I think I'm seeing a nod from Chris.
Which basically, it does the exact same thing if we sent them back to the Planning Commission to get a conditional use permit.
Basically, I mean, we are actually changing the zoning classification of this. That's the request now, is we are changing the zoning classification to a planned development. If you went through the conditional use permit, it would remain agriculture, and there could be a whole other host of uses that could eventually be permitted through conditional uses. Once you rezone it to a planned development, if they wanted to change those uses, they'd have to go through a rezoning process. It's just very similar, but just maybe two little, two different paths that you would need to take to change things around eventually.
Commissioner Kelly, did you still have a question?
Well, yeah. The original applicant for the building permit, was that?
The preed.
The farmer that owned all that, that half, whatever it is, a half section?
Yes.
And then after they did that, they built the barn and then sold off the tent?
That's correct. They built the barn, they got a building permit to build the barn first and then subsequently platted it and sold it off.
Which then changed it to another classification of non-conforming.
Exactly. That's correct.
But you're saying if a tornado or a fire took the barn out, you can't rebuild on that same foundation?
No, it's a non-conforming use. Because there's no, right now, there's no principal use, there's no established principal use on the property, which would be a residence.
But you still could, even if the barn blew down and we didn't do anything, you could still come back and get a conditional use permit and put that barn right back up?
If they were going to operate a stable, if they came back in to ask for a conditional use permit for a stable, as I indicated, our definition would be, a stable would be where you would board other people's horses in return for money. But, I mean, you could not board someone else's horses. I guess that's more of a legal issue and whether you're skirting the law, but.
If I may throw this out, we talked about the planned development as a possible solution to this. As Scott's alluding to, I mean, it's always in the power of the commission. If you think the current definition of stable is inadequate to encompass these type of operations, that you could amend that definition as well to take remuneration out of it, too. That's another option that you might have. And frankly, you know, what I've heard from Commissioner Bennega at least is, you know, maybe some lack of comfort with the non-conforming ordinance that we have, and that's always within the, I mean, obviously, there'd be notice requirements going forward and discussion with that, but, you know, our non-conforming ordinance says what it says right now about destruction of a non-conforming building, but that's something you can also revisit, too, if you don't like that standard of how much damage needs to be done before it can't be replaced. But right now, it's 60% of value, I think is what it is. So I'll just throw those two things out there.
Commissioner Bender. Scott, so I'm curious, I mean, it sounds like the solution that we could reach today is that we could amend, we could hereby motion amend the zoning so that the zoning is restricted just to allow a barn or a staple on this property. I'm curious why that's not how it came to us in the first place. I feel like maybe I'm missing something. That's what I'm worried about.
Well, you know, these things sort of evolve as we start discussing them, and when I met with the applicant, we discussed that it didn't really have a principal use, that it was a 10-acre parcel, and I don't think that we really, either one of us had really thought of, well, you could just do a planned development for just the barn and just leave the barn there. It was, we were sort of in the mindset of wanting, you know, the ability for any future buyer to build a house there, because that was, I think, what the applicant, the Holmans, had been. had been primarily approached by the public, was, well, I really would, you know, like to have a house there so I could have my horses with my house, which, you know, worked for the Holmans, because they were very close to that barn when they bought it in 2012. They were, you know, a half mile away or less, so it was easy for them to pop over there and take care of the horses. Which isn't always the case for a lot of people. If you wanted to buy this to keep your horses and you lived in Sioux Falls, you know, it's a 20-minute drive out there. So we never really discussed that option, I guess.
But you don't see thinking right now here, I mean, because this seems like a pretty elegant solution to address both Mr. Seifer's concerns and the Holmans' expressed desires. You don't see any downside? I mean, there's not some precedence here that we're missing that we need to worry about?
I think it's, I think it's a viable option, where you could say, this is the waterway meadows that would allow one barn/stable, and, but then you could have someone out there renting their horses, too, and, but I don't think there's really that big a deal, but-
Kirsten, do you have a comment?
Well, you know, being a new solution, reviewing our ordinances right now, looking in Chapter 10 of our revised zoning ordinances, you know, I would encourage you that if you're going to take this action, I know it's a matter that we're currently discussing before you, but there is, there are some statements in our ordinance that go to the intent of the use of the planned development district projects. I would encourage you to review that 10.01 as to what the intent is. I probably don't have it before you, but when considering putting forth a planned development with only a horse barn, we talked a little bit about precedent today. I will point out that our other planned development districts that are enumerated in our ordinances, Scott can correct me if I'm wrong, but my impression is this would be a very different use of planned development. I'm not saying, I'm not speaking to whether it's, I think it fits within the text of what it is, but I do think it's different than the ones that have been put forward to date.
We have, typically they have been more of a residential aspect to most of our plan developments, but if you recall, we did a planned development for the ethanol plant, which was not a residential use. The ethanol plant in Sherman that eventually was defunct, and we took it back to just ag, we rezoned it back. But originally that was a planned development. So you can have commercial plan developments, you can have residential plan developments, and if you were going to call this thing a stable, it would, I would say, have more of, somewhat of a commercial aspect to it as well.
Commissioner Kelly.
Well, this is still a rather unusual stretch of the planned development concept, isn't it? I, well, I got two questions, that's the first one. I mean, is this a really, I mean, is the ethanol plant the only thing that, and which was a commercial development? Is that the only time we've ever strayed from a multiple housing situation in a planned development?
We've had, we've had other plan developments that have commercial components to them, like out by Iverson Crossing. We have a, we have a, that is both residential and commercial, so I think if you-
But this is not commercial.
No, it wouldn't be, but if you're, if you're going to call it a stable, you're going to allow them to be able to rent it out to people. So I would say that's a commercial use, a somewhat quasi-commercial use. And, you know, I'm a firm believer of being free-thinking and trying to make government work, and I've been working with the Holmans, and I'm just trying to, you know, we're working on this together to try and make a solution that is going to address the problem that's out there. And as I see it, the problem that's out there is you have a non-conforming use. And that use is always going to be dangling out there, whether it, whether we, well, right now it's just dangling out there. And in my world, I like to have things that sort of fit in a nice, that have a nice method that you can work with them. And right now, this is something that's out there. It's a non-conforming use, we never like to see non-conformities. We like to see things always conform. That makes our world nice and ordered. And so, you know, I think what the, what the Holmans are doing, or what the applicant is doing, you know, I can support the idea of trying to address the problem that's out there. Whether they took, whether this is exactly the best method, you know, maybe there are other methods, like what Commissioner Seifer said. Well, maybe we could issue them a conditional use permit to do a stable. That would also eliminate that non-conformity, in my opinion, and that is one option. But when, when the applicant, the Holmans, came into my office, we really discussed what options they had to be able to put one residence on there as well. And, you know, we talked about rural residential, I said that that would not, in my opinion, I wouldn't support that. I don't think it would, that would be appropriate, because that would open it up to maybe eight or nine residential lots, and I don't think that's what anyone wanted out there. So the next best thing was the planned development, in my opinion, and that's the route that the Holmans chose, the applicant chose to pursue. So that's where we're at today.
Commissioner Kelly.
Well, I still think it's a stretch, but if we upheld the planning commission's denial, did the Holmans have an option of bringing it back to the planning commission with all the information that would be given today, which apparently was not given to the planning commission? And I'm not sure that it's really our job to make a decision that moves away from what the original thing was, that far. I, I mean, if, at the least, I think this has to go back to the planning commission.
So, this is my opinion, and Kirsten, Mr. Kappermeier can correct me, but if they brought back the same request, they have to wait six months. If they bring back an alternate or a different request, they can bring that back immediately. I would say that changing this to just a horse barn use with no residential component is significant enough of a change that we could act on it immediately.
Sure, I would agree with that.
I am, I'm going to weigh in just because, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Because I haven't said anything, and I did talk to Mr. Holman yesterday a little bit, and I would like to see some type of solution. I'm not really in favor of changing the zoning on this away from agriculture. I think it's a good agricultural fit. It could be, the next-door neighbor could end up buying it and putting it back in agriculture. I do think we need to find a solution for that barn, and I would like to see it go back to the planning and get a conditional use permit. I don't know why it can't have a conditional use permit. I can understand their concern that they would like to have the permit ahead of time. It's also unfortunate, when this stuff happens, that somebody sells off a little track and you buy it as a buyer and think you're all fine, and come to find out later that it doesn't qualify for standards or for our ordinances. I remember we had a case about two or three years ago where a Greek-speaking company, family came in here and had to have an interpreter, because they couldn't talk to us, they had bought over 20 acres, put the trees on the lot, and were all ready to go to build the house, found out they couldn't build a house. And that was a big deal. And that was horrible, to send them away and say no. They event, and all their neighbors said, "We won't sell." And eventually they did sell, someone sold them. Those building eligibility's come at a very high price, and I think we do a disservice to the people who do have it by just giving one. So I think that part's out. But as far as the rezoning, I'm still uncomfortable with rezoning just for, excuse me, a barn. And I would be more comfortable with getting a conditional use permit in place so they could keep the barn and it could be rebuilt, so.
If I may, Chair, and to clarify the record here, I think it's kind of back and forth, but I just want to ask Scott this to clarify the record in case somebody looks at this later. The original permit in 2005 was for a large enough parcel that this was a conforming use, correct?
Yes.
And before the Holmans bought it, the prior owner made the decision to split this smaller parcel off, rendering it non-conforming? Is that true?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, Pam, just a second.
Okay.
Pam has a comment.
Sure, yeah. I mean, I'm just trying to drill down to what exactly happened here.
I have the plat approval from February 15th of 2005. The owner we bought it from did not own more than the 10 acres. The plat approval that created this 10 acres was purchased from Dewey and Donna Bakken in February 15th, 2005. In April 12th, 2005, the county then granted a permit for the barn with septic system to those owners.
Okay. I'm sorry, I was incorrect on that.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that either way.
They did not do as has been discussed. They purchased the 10 acres and plat development from a different landowner, and following that, two months later, received the permission for the barn.
I'm glad I asked, then, thank you.
Commissioner Bennega.
Well, frankly, I think we're getting a little confused on this, because this is not a building eligibility. This is an eligibility to continue to operate a 10-acre plot that they've been paying taxes on and was frankly adopted in 2005, 11 years ago, to continue with that operation. The fuzziness comes in my estimation about whether this is a barn or a stable, which to me is kind of a mute point, frankly. And I'm going to make a recommendation that we take care of this today, because I think to wait six more months to get a conditional use permit and have the same discussion and do the same thing that we could do today, is setting a precedence, but this is an unusual piece of property. I think if I owned this property and I was paying taxes, and whether I thought it was a barn or it was a stable is not the issue. If all I want to do is replace the barn if it is destroyed. So I'm going to make a, what I would call maybe a common sense motion, is that we change waterways, meadows, to a planned development with a restriction of use rebuilding the existing structure to occupy either a stable or a barn.
So the motion is to rezon from agricultural to waterways, meadows, planned development with the condition of only a barn or stable?
Correct.
And that will stand forever?
On this piece of property, they can come back and they can do whatever they want, just like anybody else can change the building permit issues from a 40-acre plot to a 2-acre plot, or whatever they want to do. We're not making this black and white. We're trying to take care of a problem that exists based on some zoning issues and a building permit. Does it set a precedent? No, because anybody else can come and make changes if they feel like the ordinances aren't correct.
Commissioner Heiberg, I'll second that motion for purposes of discussion.
Okay. Kirsten, did you have a comment?
I'd like to hear the discussion.
Well, I guess my question is, and just to maybe clarify what Commissioner Bennega was saying, and to your point, Commissioner Heiberg, if we approve this today and one of the adjoining owners decides they want to take this land back to agriculture, they just need to come back in for rezoning, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'd like to make a substitute motion.
Commissioner Kelly, substitute motion.
Substitute motion would be to refer this back to the planning committee, and based on the information that would be given today.
I have a substitute motion to refer back to-
I'll second that.
With a second. Any additional conversation? Commissioner Kelly.
The only reason is, I believe, one, it's a significant change from what the planning commission denied, that, you know, if we're going to change this thing, maybe we ought to be changing the whole ordinances. We still, you know, that, there was a, I suppose on that half, there was what, two building eligibility's on that whole half section. There was a reason why we do that. And I also think this is quite a long stretch from what I would see as a planning, as a planned development purpose.
Motion and a second to refer back to the planning, and this was a substitute motion. Any other comments?
Can you, can you a second?
I did, we did a second.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Commissioner Bennega.
I'm not seeing why this is such a stretch. If I look back at the minutes, and frankly did that a few weeks ago, so I could be completely wrong, but their original intent was to do exactly what we're doing now with the motion that I made. They weren't trying to get a building permit, other than the fact that when they were denied the building permits, which I understand, and change this into a planned development, still using the permit to build a stable or a barn, is the same thing that they requested 10 years, or not 10 years ago, five years ago, when they bought the property and have used it like that since. If I may.
Commissioner, yeah.
Commissioner Bar, since you're still, you're on the planning commission, my question would be, was there any discussion of any other options other than the planned development? Commissioner Kelly, no, there really was not. Thank you.
I also want to say for the record that we need to make sure anybody that talked to the Holmans prior to this on the phone needs to at least disclose it for the record, just that you talked to them on the phone, so. I did.
I've talked to them on the phone.
Okay.
I talked to him on the phone and told him I couldn't talk to him.
I got a voicemail.
I didn't hear Commissioner Kelly's last comment. Would you mind repeating it just a second?
Madam Chair, he just asked if we had discussed alternatives at the planning commission. We did not.
Okay. Okay, so I have a substitute motion right now, if you're done discussing, to refer back to the planning. Ready to vote on it?
We're voting to substitute.
We're voting the substitute, right? We're voting the substitute motion right now is to refer back to the planning. Do we need a roll call vote?
Please.
Roll call vote? Commissioner Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
No.
Bennega?
No.
Kelly?
Aye.
Heiberg? Aye. So the substitute motion passes, 3 to 2, then?
No, we have to vote.
Which, as substituted. Now we have a motion on the, on the original motion as substituted, and we'll call vote.
We need a motion and a second.
Oh, I need a motion and a second on the-
No, no, we substituted it, so that's before you four vote now. The substitution was all in one.
So now the substitution goes-
Is it too late to ask the question?
No, go ahead and ask a question.
So if we approve this motion, can somebody explain to me exactly what happens?
It goes back to the planning and they can, they can go back immediately.
So timing wise, how fast can they be back here?
This next month, right?
We meet later this month, and then any appeal from that would be 20 days later, right?
Commissioner Bender, I have to ask the same question myself of the state's attorney's office, because I'm not sure now whether we need to re-advertise this for a potential, I mean, we had already advertised this, and it gets into a sort of a legalistic question.
We need to provide notice all over, I mean, I would think in fairness, we would have to.
We'll have to re-advertise this, and-
If you pass the motion.
Well, I think that, I think I can get it advertised, and we can get it on the 26th of October meeting, so I-
So it doesn't delay it.
And it would come back to you again in November, then, so you're basically looking at a six to seven week delay, it'll be back in front of you. And that would be as a planned development, because you're referring back a planned development, and we would address whether we would allow a stable slash accessory building, barn, as a planned development.
And it is a point of order, too. If you were, I'm not saying, but, so you know, if you were to deny this today and they brought back a materially different proposal, they could do that immediately.
They could do that immediately, too.
So, but I-
But this has been voted on.
Well, it's been substituted, it has not passed yet.
Could you explain what you just said?
Yeah, I understand that.
We talked about this today, that the proposal as it is before you is what is forwarded from the planning commission. If you were to vote to deny that, that doesn't mean they can't address the issue for six months, as long as they don't bring back the same proposal. What it means is, they could bring a different proposal as soon as they could validly get it on the next agenda. If you vote to send it back, it's in the context of, well, I mean, we could change, we can change the conditions of the planned development, like Commissioner Bennega talked about, about no building eligibility, and it's a stable and whatever, but that can be sent back immediately on your positive vote on this motion to send it back, if that makes sense.
So the substitute motion basically does what we could have done here today anyway. So Commissioner Kelly, if that's what you want in the substitute motion, it would just go back and come back just exactly the same way?
My question is, on the substitute motion, that substitutes the motion that was on the floor.
Correct.
When we voted on it, wasn't that the end of it?
No. You need to vote on, you were voting to substitute it, now it's substituted, now you vote on the-
No, that's the main motion. It's just like an amendment, then.
Right, because you could conceivably want the substitute motion to come forward and maybe not want it to pass.
So do you need a motion then?
No, we don't need another motion. We're trying to decide what will happen. If, if we, if we go ahead with the substitute motion, they have to take it back in the same form to the planning zone.
We're just denying, I mean, we're not acting is what we're doing, isn't that correct? We're taking.
You're remanding it.
The only action is, we're sending it back to the, to the Planning Commission.
But it would be the same thing, we'd go back to them, which they're going to probably send it back with another denial, so all we've done is delayed it 16 years.
Well, not necessarily. They can make changes.
Madam Chair, the other alternatives would then be able to be discussed. And so instead of rejecting it and having a six-month delay, we would be able to, you know, come up with a different plan that might be more palatable.
But the different plan only includes the zoning, the rezoning, correct?
It would be a planned development proposal, but you could discuss what is in that.
Right, so if it goes back, it can only be a planned development. That's the only thing you can discuss.
But isn't that what my motion was originally?
Right.
Correct.
So what are we doing that for? Just to delay it so that the Planning Commission can come back and tell us again that we're not correct?
That's my point. So if you want to have more options available, such as the one where Scott suggested, or somebody suggested, that they just get a conditional use permit, we can't even send it back, we're not sending it back for that.
But they denied that originally?
No, we never had a conditional use.
They've never talked about that one. That one has not been discussed.
Sounds like a three-ring circus.
It sounds like a three-ring circus that wasn't quite ready. So if we deny, if we go along with the amended motion, it goes back to the planning exactly as it is right now, but they could, they could change in there what their conditions are for that planned development.
That's right.
So if we deny this, if we deny this current motion that's on the table, we could have a substitute motion that we just deny this, and then it could go back as anything they wanted? Kirsten?
You can, if you, if this motion fails currently before us. You can propose any other motion to act upon it in your authority as the reviewing board. But you could do that. That's one of the things you could do.
But my question is, if we denied it here, they can take it back in October with a new proposal of anything, of anything.
As long as it's material different than the proposal they brought this time, that's my opinion.
And is the material difference, difference that they would bring back, even, even one of their options could be the waterway meadows district with, so they could bring back more than one proposal? No.
And the flip side of that conversation is, if we accept the motion, then we just wiped everything off the table and they have to wait six months?
No, if we accept the motion, they get to come back in October.
We're accepting the denial.
No, no, you're not.
Okay. Point of order, motion before you is to remand it back to the Planning Commission for reconsideration of the planned development district. The conditions of the planned development district, the Planning Commission can reconsider, but it's that planned development that will be remanded for further consideration of the Planning Commission.
Whereas if we reject this and have that six-month delay, they could come back next month with a conditional use thing for that barn.
That's my opinion, yes.
What I understood Scott to say is that if we upheld the Planning Committee, if instead we upheld the Planning Commission's rejection, that they can bring this back to the Planning Commission in a new form with significant changes in, to the next meeting.
I think I could fit it on.
As long as it's properly noticed, yes.
Because it seems to me it's all about, you know, the value of the property and.
Does an acceptance of this motion currently before us and sending it back to planning eliminate their ability to come in with a conditional use next month?
That was my question.
Madam Chair, that seems to be what I see now, as, you know, I would like the Planning Commission to have the opportunity to discuss all the options, but apparently that would not be the case.
Right, Kirsten?
I suppose it could be put on as two separate items on the same agenda, but I think there's some question about that. I really don't want to say that that's permissible, I guess, so.
I do have one more question. I'm sorry, I'm still trying to decide. So if we deny this, then they can still come back in two weeks with a different proposal?
If you, if you, if you deny it by upholding the decision of the Planning Commission, they can bring back a significantly altered plan as soon as they possibly can notice it, and I would assume that would be to the next planning meeting.
Okay. Commissioner Kelly.
There's nothing to stop them, though, from bringing another, bringing another request in for the CUP solution in addition to reviewing this one, is there?
I'm not going to opine on that, I'm not sure.
Well, no, but, I mean, Scott, can they?
They could bring both.
Can you have two issues on the same property?
I would like to bring both in, and we would take action on one.
Then you decide one or the other. Yeah.
You can do that.
Then if.
As long as they can bring them both.
It's a little, it's a little unconventional, but.
As long as they can have their options on the table, that's what I'm concerned about.
All things unconventional.
All right, we have a motion and a second that has been substituted to refer back to the planning.
I'm not 100% sure what the heck I'm voting on.
We better do a roll call vote. Are we have another comment?
Should we clarify this?
Okay, clarify.
You're voting on a substitute motion to remand the matter back to the Planning Commission to consider the planned development proposal. What conditions are in that planned development proposal can be upheld, altered, denied, whatever, by the Planning Commission, but it's in that planned development structure that's going back.
But according to Scott, we can bring another proposal, too.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the motion. Does everybody understand it now? Okay. Need a roll call vote? Commissioner Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
No.
Benega?
No.
Kelly?
Yes.
Hagerger?
Yes. Motion passes 3 to 2. Sorry, got two more weeks, they'll figure it out.
Hope you live long enough.
Item number 11 is consider motion to approve the change order number 1 in the amount of $988 to the contract with SFC Civil Contractors for project number MC Bridge Bearing 2015, repair of bearing on three structures. DJ Boothy, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. DJ Boothy, Highway Superintendent. This one should be pretty straightforward. We are preparing to do some bridge maintenance with a contract with Sioux Falls Construction. They're replacing a bearing on one of our structures, and during their initial inspection, they noticed a small hole in one of the beams, and they need to put some plates on that beam web prior to repairing the bearings. So they've given us a price of $988, which is acceptable. We just need to execute this change order prior to doing the work.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any questions for DJ? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 11 is report on September 26, 2015, tax deed auction and surplus county property auction, and consider a motion to approve resolution for the sale of tax deed properties, RDAI, RDID 24029 and RDID 53766, Bob Lutz. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Cindy, you about said it all for me.
Tried.
I should just ask for a few questions, but, but anyway, on September 26, 2015, the auditor's office held its annual tax deed sale. On the sale, there were three tax deed properties that were sold for a total of $14,150. Tax deed number 2575 and tax deed number 2593 were fully paid on the day of the sale. The remaining tax deed number 2539 is still awaiting full payment. The action we're requesting today is the approval of two resolutions of sale that have been fully paid, so that we may abate all outstanding taxes, penalties, and interest. Hold it. I'm going to read this here, because Cindy and I got together here, and we've got the exact wording of what the action is that we're requesting today. The action requested is for the approval of the tax deed and surplus property sales and the approval of two resolutions for RDID 53766 and RDID 24029, authorizing the Treasury to issue quick claim deeds and the auditor to abate outstanding taxes, interest, and penalties and special assessments. Now, there was two other, there's three tax deeds, properties on this sale, and there were two other ones that were declared surplus by you out in Corson here, so we've been going through that. They were also moved on the sale. And those two properties were sold for a total of $82,500. And that money, that $82,500, since it was gifted to the county, goes directly into our general fund. The other amount, fully collected, $14,150, will get apportioned out to the taxing entities. Are there any questions that I can answer? And then I should also tell you, the one, there was a property out in Humboldt, South Dakota, that last year I pulled off the sale because we weren't getting any bids for it. And actually, there was another property that I pulled off the sale, too, which is in the southwest corner of Sioux Falls. We were not getting any bids on that. This year, the Humboldt property sold for $3,000. It was also discovered that the other piece of property that I pulled off the sale last year had a big pile of dirt that DJ and Lloyd expressed interest in. So I kept that off the sale until the dirt is gone, and I think a little time may hopefully improve our fortunes on that piece out in southwest Sioux Falls.
Any questions for Bob? He did state the motion. Does anybody want to act on his motion without repeating it?
I'd make a motion to approve. I do have a comment, I guess.
Your motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Comment by Commissioner Bar?
Thank you for the good result this year, Bob, and please sell more properties.
Well, you know, you never know what's going to happen. Like I say, we sold, we sold one this year that I couldn't get a bite on last year. And then the ones out in, out in Corson there, honestly, nobody expected to get that, so.
Yeah, very nice to see that.
It's open to prognostication as to why that number went up so high.
I have a motion and a second to approve the tax deed auctions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Item number 13 is authorize the chairman to sign the elevator service contract with Kone Elevators Escalators as a participant in the U.S. Communities Program. Bar, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Mark Trins, Facilities Department. Minnetonka County currently owns 13 Kone elevators, and as of right now, seven of those elevators are under full service contract, and six, the remaining six are under planned maintenance contract. Kone presented us a new elevator service contract that puts all 13 of them under the full service contract, and for $1,123.20 less annually cost. The contract is five years. We can cancel anytime. It falls under the U.S. Communities Government Purchasing Alliance, which we are a member of. The contract includes parts and labor unless an update or an obsolete part.
Any questions on this contract? Is there a motion?
Motion to cancel the current contract and enter into the new contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Next, item number 14, thank you, Mark, is Minnetonka County liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports? Just going to give you a quick one. I spent this, last week, I was in Phoenix on a JDAI conference, and just give you a very short update. Actually, had a lot of things written, so not sure, which I want to tackle for you, but JDAI is going to start moving towards the deep end, which is the kids post-adjudicated to start to work on closing down juvenile prisons, and that's kind of their new direction that they're going. They are still staying with the program that, or the thrust that they use now with the decrease of kids in pre-adjudicated stays. They talked about, since the baseline, when they started this whole process of how we treat our kids in, in the core system, they've had a 43% decrease in average day of, average length of stay and average length of population in kids in detention nationwide. They've had 60,000 less admissions. They've had 1.3 million fewer bed days, and they've decreased the racial, ethnic disparities by about 43% across the nation. There are a lot more, obviously, statistical numbers, but great things have happened since they've been doing this, and it's been over about 20 years period. I went to quite a few different breakout sessions that were very interesting, stuff that might be beneficial to us going forward. One of them I went to was on the Baltimore Rising and the lessons that they learned in their crisis management and stuff, and it was very interesting to hear kind of the inside story of what had happened, maybe what you didn't hear on the news about how things kind of blew out of proportion very quickly. And they admitted, not, I wouldn't say fault, but just talked about some of the things that they could have done better. Communication, I think, was good, but there was still some cleanup that they could have done in communication and some of the improvements that maybe they made upon it. And I don't think you really understand what's going to happen until you're in the middle of a crisis, and you go back later and you're cleaning up the mess and saying, "What could we have done better?" And so they had some suggestions on how to handle a crisis situation. Granted, they're a bigger city than we are, and their, where their locations of their schools and their Justice Department and their Sheriff's Office and all that is, was all located in one area, which actually caused more concern as they shut down the city, they shut down all those kids in the center of the city with no transportation home. But just some very interesting tips that came out of that. Anyway, I think it was very worthwhile.